I call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, January 13th, 2020, and the time is 7:07 PM. Dr. Hillman, there were a few items in the table file.
Yes, in the table file this evening you will see some gift agreements, or a gift agreement again, formalizing that very generous $25,000 donation from post-consumer brands that we learned about last October. We have some additional personnel items, including appointments, increased, decreased, change in assignment, a leave of absence, some retirement and resignations, and a grant application approval.
Okay, well, thank you very much. We'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Moved by Amy, is there a second?
Aye.
Second by Ellen. All those in favor of the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We now have an opportunity for public comment. This is a chance for residents, business and property owners, parents, students and employees of the Northfield Public School District to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? Okay, seeing no one come forward, we will move on to announcements and recognitions. Dr. Hillman?
Yes, I have two announcements this evening. The first is congratulations to seniors Audrey Pagel and Jose Gonzalez Ramirez, who are the recipients of the Minnesota State High School League's Arts, Academics and Athletics Award, other known as the AAA Award. The purpose of the AAA Award is to recognize and honor high school seniors who have excelled in the classroom, on the athletic field, and in the fine arts. Its purpose is also to elevate academic standards and create greater awareness of league-sponsored activities and their values, and to provide member schools of the league with an opportunity to participate in a statewide program that supports, promotes, and recognizes academic and extracurricular achievements. Audrey and Jose will be recognized at an on-court ceremony held in conjunction with the boys' state basketball tournament in March. So congratulations to Audrey and Jose, who are our 2020 Minnesota State High School League AAA Award winners, and a really great honor for those two awesome seniors. The second announcement that I have this evening is quite sad, and I am saddened to inform you of the passing of Sarah Moyer, one of our educational assistants at Greenville Park. She was a treasured member of our Gecko family and will be dearly missed. She passed away this morning with her family by her side following a medical event this past weekend. Sarah is survived by her husband Kerry and four children. One of her children is a recent Northfield High School graduate, two are students at Northfield High School, and one is a student at Sibley. And I invite those present to join me in a moment of silence to honor Sarah's memory. Thank you. It's been a difficult day in the district, especially at Greenville Park and at Sibley where Sarah was a frequent volunteer. Of course, as normal, our folks have rallied to support our family and each other, and I want to compliment all of the work that happened at Greenville Park today, sending counselors and social workers from other buildings to support staff during the day. It was challenging. And people process things in different ways, and people have done that all day today. At this time, I'd like to invite Board Director Dr. Rob Hardy, who had a personal knowledge of Sarah. They were neighbors, and in true form, our poet laureate has written a poem about Sarah today that he would like to share as part of our announcements.
You were a friend of summer days, of neighborhood block parties in June's slow dusk. Your presence was always sunlight and warmth. Dear friend, your loss is like the passing of a season, like waking too soon to winter's cold erasure. I have spent the day mostly in silence, thinking of you and all the lives you've touched. I have never had your faith, but in this way I can imagine a heaven. I have never known how to pray, but your life was an answer already given.
Thank you, Rob. And we just invite people to reflect on that life is precious, and none of us know each day. And we just, I hope you will rally and will support the Moyers, and then, of course, our family here within the school district as well. Those are your announcements for this evening.
Thank you. Anything anyone would like to add? And thank you, Rob. That was really beautiful. Okay, we will move on now to items for discussion and reports. We welcome Prairie Creek Community School Director Simon Tyler and Arcadia Director Laura Stelter to do a board report. So welcome, Simon.
Simon, you might need to go to the slideshow menu and pop it into presentation mode. Oh, you gotta use the mouse. There you go. Go under the slideshow menu, Dan. There you go, right there, and say play from start. There you go.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Simon Tyler. I'm the Director of Prairie Creek Community School. This is my ninth year as Director, and I believe this is the fourth year of our current five-year contract with Northfield School District as our authorizer. And I'd like to start just by expressing my appreciation for the ongoing support of the Northfield School Board, Dr. Hillman, and all their staff who collaborate with us as our authorizer. We feel very fortunate to have this partnership. I'm going to give you a brief presentation this evening with an opportunity for questions afterwards. And I believe you also have a one-page summary of some of the comments that I'll share as well. Let's see if I can move this on here.
I want you to make sure it's turned on on the side, Simon.
Yeah.
Or you can just use the, you can also just use the arrow keys on that keyboard, Simon.
Well, I think maybe it will help if I turn it on. So let's try that. There we go.
Part of it's a test. This will be included in your review of those.
It was an early test, and I stumbled briefly, but moved forward.
But as always, come right back.
But moved forward. So my first slide is just a reminder of our mission statement. We have four pillars to our mission. We're a community school, child-centered school, a progressive school, and we aim to make the world a better place. On the right-hand side of the slide, I'd just like to talk for a few minutes, if I could, about a few program highlights that we've had at Prairie Creek, both in the past year and reporting on 2018, '19, which have also moved on into this current year as well. We've had a stronger educating for equity focus in our program for quite a while now. We've had a few exciting initiatives relating to this. We've centered some of our curricular thoughts on this via professional development, on bringing an equity lens to our progressive, integrated curriculum, our thematic learning piece, with a component in our thematic planning where teachers are introducing an equity lens as they think about social studies-centered themes in particular. We've done some reflection through our peer coaching model on read-alouts and the books we're choosing with children, and the skills with which we're guiding conversation towards equity issues as well. And we sought to enhance our own knowledge as educators on equity issues through professional development. The whole staff has all participated in the National Progressive Educators Network Conference, and attended presentations by speakers like Dr. Paul Gorski, Dr. Patina Love, and then we followed up a conversation back at our faculty and a reading of Dr. Love's recent book, We Want to Do More Than Survive. So this is not work that has a beginning or an end, but it's become an important part of our practice going forward. We've had all sorts of really exciting collaborations this year. One I'd like to highlight in particular because it involves the district is happening right now, this week. It ties into the literacy interventions. Bullet further down, we've been working with Hope Langston and Mary Grace Hansen and literacy coaches of the district, talking about some of the professional development we've doing, we've been doing at Prairie Creek around dyslexia and serving children with reading difficulties. We have a good fortune to have three outstanding special education teachers who are all trained in Orton-Gillingham intervention techniques. They've been working to bring our general ed staff up to date with some practices they can implement for reading interventions in the classroom. And it's made a real exciting difference to always supporting children. In conversation with Hope Langston, Mary Grace Hansen, the literacy coaches, our three special education teachers, I think, are going to do a workshop later this week with some elementary teachers from the district. So this is a dream of mine, that the original intent of the charter school was that we would be given a space in which to innovate and bring forward ideas in our small setting, and then collaborate in a larger network for the good of children. So we're really excited about this. It's just the beginning of it, and so appreciative that the district is willing to engage with us in this collaboration. We're also very connected with the teacher-powered network of schools here in Minnesota and regionally, and we'll be holding a series of site visits at Prairie Creek this coming spring with educators from other small schools from around the state. We're also engaged in a very fun collaboration with St. Olaf College right now. Once every three years, we create an opera with some of their students and one of their professors, Dr., sorry, Professor Dale Cruz, during their Jaden term. That's happening right now, and we are co-creating an opera. It's on a sort of animals, woodlands theme. It's emerging right now, and we'll be performing that actually at the Northfield Middle School Auditorium on January 28th, and all will be welcome. So that's a very exciting collaboration for us. A couple of other things I'll just mention on this slide before moving on. We've always had a tradition of outdoor learning at Prairie Creek. We're fortunate to have beautiful buildings and grounds. We've made it a key focus of our professional development to study the forest classroom opportunities, look at the space we have. We've built a new pavilion to support outdoor learning groups in all weathers, and we've done some studies around ecological identity and how we can sort of bring a green focus to children K through 5 in our educational model. Lastly, I'll just mention the math, basic fact fluency focus. As part of a professional development committee work last year, we did a lot of reading, a lot of study of best practices around teaching children foundational numeracy skills. Saw some opportunities in our program. The teachers worked together over the summer to create some curriculum, some math games, which we then brought to our parent community last fall at a parent education night, basically wanting to equip our parents with some of the games, strategies, practice, activities around learning basic math facts that they can use in their home setting as well. So those are a few program highlights. I'll be happy to answer any questions about any of those at the conclusion here. The chart on the right gives you just a summary of our Minnesota Comprehensive Assessment Standardized Test Scores over the last four years. Give you a little bit of trend data of how we're doing by that standardized measure compared to the state scores. So as you can see, the data there is our fifth graders take the Science MCA, and we've consistently performed strongly in that subject area. You can see the trend in our math schools, whereas looking for opportunities to enhance our math curriculum and instruction. And below, you can see that we're also consistently above state measures in reading as well. As part of our progressive education mission, we do talk about evaluation a lot and what we believe authentic evaluation to be. We understand we're a public school, and we will be assessed and evaluated by our standardized test scores, but it's not our primary interest on how we want to know children. In our mission to educate the whole child, we use an alternative method of reporting to our families. Our teachers write narrative reports about the children twice a year. They're actually involved in that process right now, coming up towards our winter conference cycle. That gives the teachers an opportunity to talk about, certainly talk about science, math, literacy, but also invest considerable time writing about the children's social, emotional development, how they connect with the arts, how they're developing within their classroom spaces, give the parents a more rounded picture of the child. Underpinning those narrative reports are a whole battery of different forms of evaluation, from teacher formative assessments. We're very much a performance-based program through culminating events, arts activities, and so on, and teachers have an opportunity to observe, see how the children are growing through their habits of mind, and then convey that back to the parents in spoken conference and written word. Lastly, this slide just gives you a little oversight on our financial management. Of course, as a small public school, we have to pay careful attention to our fund balance. We do have a fund balance policy where we forecast out three years with a goal of budgeting for a 25% fund balance. And as you can see from this chart, over the last few years, we've managed to stay consistently above that with just a very slight trend downwards, which I think is appropriate. It means we're using the funds for the benefit of our education program. This year, we're actually going a little further out. Finance Committee is doing some five-year forecasting and seeing what questions we might have going forward as we seek to sustain the program. We have key elements of our financial care. We've got the good fortune to be at or very close to full enrollment, which is our key budgetary piece, and we maintain a white list as well across the program. We have an outstanding finance committee, board, and our faculty, we're small enough that our faculty can be very engaged in financial conversations, budgetary decisions as well. And we have two teachers who serve on our board, so they bring the teacher voice into our financial planning. And that concludes my presentation.
Wow, great presentation.
Any questions?
Yeah, great presentation. Thank you, Simon. We always love to have this presentation every year. So Board members, questions, comments? Prior to moving on to Arcadia. Ellen?
Yeah, great presentation. What I'm really curious about is on the science piece.
Yeah.
So, one, kudos to, overall, I was thinking about the trend that you've had in math, too, has been really, really positive. But, you know, curiosity on the science, and I know that as you laid out, Simon, you're not, you're not just about standardized test scores, but you have these other evaluation tools. So when you think about the science, I guess I have two questions for you. One, because you have these other evaluation tools that you could potentially be able to characterize the test scores in different ways, sort of triangulate, understand in a deeper way, you know, what makes that, you know, 85.7% is quite impressive. So if you could give us a little bit more about maybe what you know about that. And then the second piece is, how do you fit it? How do the teachers fit it in their day?
Science instruction. Yeah, well, I always talk about test scores with an element of caution, too, even to a point where I'm always a little wary about throwing up any chart because we're such a small cell size, and the Science MCA is just our fifth grade. So it's typically 50 students, so we can have some pretty wild swings in those scores. I think the fifth grade science assessment is an interesting one in its design. It's a scenario design, short videos that the children get to look at and then answer some questions around, which aligns more neatly with our progressive model, I think, than some of the other standardized assessments. We enter into science instruction through what we call broad themes. A theme is a sustained period of study around a topic. It could be birds, it could be geology, it could be climate change. Often with science central to the theme, often social studies central to the theme, we do some curriculum mapping to make sure we're hitting the core areas across a two-year span that each child is with one particular teacher at our school. So that's sort of how we do it, you know. How do we hit the big areas of science? How do we hit the big social studies? It's through our thematic design. And we do make a very intentional decision to say that's going to be a big chunk of our day, which frankly can make us a little bit more vulnerable to areas of standardized measure around reading or math, because we're prioritizing the curiosity, excitement that we see the children getting through these large interdisciplinary themes. I think we're at the age in the elementary realm where children love science, and if we can create that space for them to explore it, they're going to engage in that. I think they also hit a lot of the science at our school, not just through these big interdisciplinary themes, but also through personal projects. We're not a project-based school to the level, let's say, Arcadia. Laura's going to present to you about in a moment, but our children do engage in personal projects, all our children, every year. And often, there's a strong science focus to many of these projects, and then children are teaching children constantly. So Ellen, I think that's one thing that sort of builds and deepens as the kids move through the school, is that piece of the older children, if they study a major theme, it is often presented back to the younger children. They're, in essence, teaching the younger children. So while children might not always be explicitly studying every element of science, they're often having experience around it sort of by association or instruction from their peers. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Other questions? Amy?
Hi, Simon. Thank you for your presentation. It's always great to see how well the school's doing and the math that I'm very excited about, because it's really improved since you've started there over the last nine years. My question for you is, you may have heard that we, as a board, are looking at a later school start time, and that would affect Prairie Creek as well, since we provide busing for most of your students. And I was just wondering if you had any comments about that.
Not really at this point. I was sort of waiting. I saw it was on your, an update was on your agenda tonight, and Dr. Hillman's been great about keeping me in the loop about conversations, discussions that are happening in the community. I think our community has been welcomed into all those conversations as well. I mean, clearly, the key question, whatever way the board goes, is, can we still be supported, integrated into any transportation system that happens? From my understanding, a lot of the thinking behind this question involves the benefits for older children. We're a K-5 school. I know that the Benjamin Bus, the bus company's doing a lot of incredibly complex mapping scenarios for whatever decision is made. And we just really appreciate that ourselves, and Arcadia, St. Doms is sort of part of their thinking. Certainly, the transportation piece would be the number one for us. Just from what I know, certainly, having had my children, my own personal children are grown up now, and I think they would have benefited from a later start if that was an opportunity for them in their high school years. But I also understand it's incredibly complex thing when you're looking at a full model of how to make that shift. So we want to collaborate. We certainly appreciate being kept in the loop, but it seems that transportation is the number one piece for us. How would that affect us?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions, comments? Go.
Hi. I'm curious about, you mentioned the fundraising as part of your financial picture. I'm just curious, does that support the general fund? Is that for special projects? And then kind of how significant a part of your budget is that?
Yeah. Well, my board chair, Ben Miller, is here tonight as well. I should have started out with the question time by saying, you're welcome to address questions to Ben as well. And I mentioned Ben because our board has really sort of led the way in making sure that development is an important focus for us. Just as the school district, large traditional districts are really dependent on levies, referendums, to bridge the gap between what we get from the state to support public education and what we need to appropriately educate children. In our small setting, where we don't have access to the levy or referendum money, we have to create a model of sort of bridging that gap ourselves. It really is just for the general fund. We do our budgeting very carefully, very conservatively, and set targets for our development each year. This year, for example, Rob is $75,000 to help us bridge a gap to make our budget work and keep our fund balance target intact. We're thoughtful about how we do it. I think there's sort of three key prongs that we take on in our fundraising. We utilize the gift-to-the-max model in the fall because that's a big energy that nonprofits like ourselves can engage with. We do look at end-of-the-year gifts, if that's something families can access. And then we have a big community auction in the spring. Those are the three key areas. I think we're also recognizing that unless there's some more money forthcoming to support public education, this is something which is going to get bigger, not smaller, as a need for us, it's just our reality, probably like most public schools. So that's part of our five-year forecasting. What are our development needs going to be? Are we going to need to invest more time in that development work to sustain the model we have right now? Essentially, it is a bridge a gap for the General Education Fund. I don't know if you have answered that.
Great questions. Other questions, comments, board members have?
I have a couple of questions. Simon, I was looking at your last year's presentation and highlighted a couple of things. Last year, you talked about you were exploring some pre-K programming options.
Yeah. Yeah, we had a study group that spent a year looking into that. We had some terrific conversation with Erin about this, who was really helpful. At the end of the year, we concluded a couple of things. Part of our learning was, in our model, access to kindergarten from, if we were to have a pre-K, in order to have access to those children into our kindergarten model through the lottery system and charter school admissions requirements, our pre-K program would have to be fully funded, completely tuition-free. And with the funds available to start that program, maintain that program right now, we couldn't make a budgetary decision that made sense for us to pursue starting a program until there's better outside support for that model. We're very cautious about creating a fee-based program, largely very aware of sort of the power and privilege that could provide in our program in terms of families coming in wanting access into K and then potentially not being available through the restrictions on admissions. So it was a great study. It's something I think we learned a lot about, and we haven't sort of given up on the idea, but it's on hold for those financial reasons right now.
Oh, sure, sure. The other area you highlighted was the formation of a technology committee, and you're actually exploring possible consulting with a firm in terms of helping make some technology decisions. So do you have an update there?
Yeah, we do. We do actually consult now with a company called Canopy Solutions. It's a small IT company that works with small schools like ours. We meet with them on a monthly basis as part of our technology committee. The committee we've established has representation from all our bands of teachers, our technology consultants, and administration in the school. It's twofold. One, it's about how do we make sure we've got the technology we need to meet our mission? So we have invested quite comprehensively in Chromebooks. We find Chromebooks support some requirements around testing, but also give our kids a fairly flexible tool they can use for thematic, project-based work, math instruction, and so on. We also made the decision to install our Apple TVs across our classrooms as well, which the teachers have really appreciated. It's also a committee where we have some conversations about pedagogy, you know, the why behind technology. It's a place to sort of catch that conversation around our decisions on technology expenditure, but also its use in the classroom. When do we want technology? When don't we want it in the children's educational setting?
Okay, excellent. And of course, you touched on it, but I think it's an area we need to really focus and herald is the word. herald is the work that your group is going to do, your staff is going to do with our staff this week. That's just incredible and really exciting and we talk about that all the time and you're happy with innovation and that we're able to share on that. So thank you for making that happen. That's really exciting.
Excited too.
So and then of course, we have to say the fund balance, that's just incredibly impressive, incredibly impressive. So we know that does not come without a lot of hard work. So thank you to Ben Miller and to Simon and to making those hard decisions and that's something that we understand and appreciate that you have that fund balance there. So yeah, so thank you. And again, I think we also have to highlight the relationship that Dr. Hillman and you have cultivated and how impressive of a relationship we have as a district with our charter schools and it's something that the board is appreciative of and we actually, you know, understand that it does not come out with, come without work and effort and Dr. Hillman spending time and you allowing that interchange of information and ideas and so we thank you for that.
And we also want to thank Director of Teaching and Learning Mary Grace Hansen has really been really instrumental in helping me with the charter school authorization part over the last couple of years too. We really enjoy our site visits.
Yes, we do. Thanks.
Excellent. And we always enjoy having you, Simon. You're just so incredibly passionate about progressive education and you have such great vision and you just do an outstanding job. So they're really fortunate to have you.
Well, thank you. Thank you for having me here this evening.
Okay, thank you. So now we get to welcome for the first time Laura. All right, so I blast my.
Dan, can you help her with, can you just escape?
I blast my career. Okay, we actually welcome for the first time Lori Stelter, who, Laura Stelter, the new director of Arcadia Charter School. So welcome, Laura.
Thank you.
So the, we thank Sam for, Northfield News for doing this story on Laura when she first took the post in August as a new executive director of Arcadia. So we know you came from Shattuck St. Mary's and that you were a board member for quite a few years, actually, Arcadia board member. So, so we welcome you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having me. I'm really excited to be here for my first presentation to the board and I am, as we've been saying, very grateful for that relationship between the charter schools and the Northfield Public School District. I think it's really wonderful that we have this educational ecosystem available in Northfield that's so outstanding. So I'm going to be a little bit quick, I think, because I looked at sort of the categories and said, okay, here's the major information. So Arcadia students are doing well. We met or made progress on all of our World's Best Workforce Goals, including the achievement gap goal and ours was around special education. Our math scores in special education were quite low and they've increased significantly over the course of the past couple of years with targeted intervention. So our special education teachers did some training around math instruction and we've been working with students more specifically around math and more intention to the instruction that they were receiving. And so this is our average score, but even if you look at our special education scores in particular, they've increased substantially. But we are, you know, ahead of the state in proficiency in math reading and in science, though in science it's a smaller percentage. I think it's only 2%, but we'll get there. Our enrollment, I'm going to just address enrollment and then I'll get into the financial piece, but our enrollment has been declining the last couple of years. I think our ADM this year will probably still be a little bit lower than last year. So we were at 117 in FY '18, this is ADM, and then 112.21 in '19. This year, right now, we're probably going to end up around 110. But in general, I think our enrollment, my goal was to get us to 115 by the end of this year, 118 next year, and then within five years to 126, which is sort of our cap. And that does not include post-secondary enrollment option students. But, so we do have four students who are enrolled in post-secondary, the post-secondary enrollment options. So I think we're going to be okay. And we have some really exciting things happening right now that I think will help, that I'll talk about in a minute. But despite the declining enrollment, our financial management has been going well. We continue to be financially stable, maintaining a healthy cash flow. We had, last year, we had anticipated a possible shortfall, but we actually ended up $40,000 over or without, sorry, and having that much left. And then we transferred $19,791 out to cover lunch expenses and then the remainder went into our fund balance, which is now at $270,042. And that was, that actually exceeded our policy targets, what we had set as a board. And so now we've set a new policy. We are, we've moved, increased that to look at, you know, trying to cover those months of expenses that you try to cover with your fund balance. So right now, we're really focused on the mission and exploring what it means to be a progressive school, trying to revitalize that mission and come back to it. A couple of years ago, we added this engaged citizenship piece, which is so central to progressive education. And so we're really building around that. The middle school this year has started, we've always, we've used developmental designs for a number of years, but this year they, within the project-based curriculum, have also added pieces that are more intentional around building community and how do you participate in community? So the first term was around identity. This term, they're looking at social justice and especially focusing on racism. And next term, they're doing a middle school-wide collaborative project around, they're collaborating on a project designed to look at citizenship. So we're really trying to dig into that and building on social emotional learning opportunities within the curriculum. We have a really solid foundation, so we have this really wonderful opportunity to build. And so that's really kind of what we're doing. Obviously, it's my first year, so I'm trying to build relationships amongst the staff and within the community and figure out sort of where are the places that we have the best opportunities to do that. And I have a wonderful staff that is really pulling, we're all pulling together toward that. So it's exciting. One of the things that I had done at Shattuck that I was excited to bring to Arcadia was electronic portfolios. So all of the students are now documenting their portfolios or their projects through their portfolios. I had one student who I asked if he would be willing to be sort of the pilot for a, sort of like an honors portfolio, a step up. It would be a showcase portfolio of his best work. And he not only put it together, but then actually used it to apply for college through their application via portfolio process and was successful and received an excellent scholarship and had a wonderful conversation with the admissions people at that college. And so I'm excited to see where that will take us. All of the students are going to have those in coming years. And I think that project-based piece, strengthening the processes around that will also help as we try to talk about who we are and really market what it is that we offer that adds to the community and to the possibilities available in Northfield. There are pictures from our Thanksgiving fundraiser, which is an annual event. The students actually create skits and then compete for, they, it's a trophy called the coveted coconut monkey.
Yeah, it's a big deal.
It is a very big deal. And purple with the grapes over here, they actually won the coveted coconut monkey this year. It's very exciting.
Great. Thank you for the report. So board members, questions, comments for Laura?
If I can make just an introductory statement, if that's okay?
Oh, absolutely.
So I wanted to just share with you that I've had the opportunity now to meet with Laura several times, right when she came on board and took over for Dr. Warrenson, the three of us met together. I've been at Arcadia a couple of times since then because, you know, moving into a role of administrator, even when you've been on the board, there's a lot to it. And I just want to share with the board that, you know, Laura is just the next in a long line of highly successful charter school directors. And I want to compliment the Arcadia board for their excellent selection, the way that Laura has laid out for me, how she's leading the school, how she's managing the school, making decisions, bringing the school back to the real hands-on, project-based learning, making that the central focus. For my job at this to be successful, I need to have not just good, but great charter school directors. And I just want the board to know that Laura has my complete faith in the work that she has done so far and the direction that she's taking Arcadia. So just really well done to begin with. There's a learning curve to this thing and, you know, Laura attacks it. So congratulations on a successful start, Laura. I just wanted to share that with board members as Laura is a new face to us.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Great, thank you. Other questions, comments? Ellen?
So can you tell us a little bit more about the electronic portfolio? You touched on it and talked about the one student, but sort of your vision for how this is going to get rolled through all the grades or whatever the plan is?
Yes, so there's sort of a collection portfolio where all of their projects are stored and the, my hope is that as part of their junior and senior years, they would start building a showcase portfolio where they could really look at, this is my best work. And that would be something that they could share with colleges. One of the challenges that Arcadia has had is that its transcript is way too complicated. It's eight pages long. It's a listing of project titles for forever and it just, it doesn't, it's not readable. So I had colleges calling me and saying, could you explain what the categories are of these things so that we can see if this person even qualifies to go to school here? And so this was actually part of my hope was to simplify the transcript, but still give students an opportunity to share something that highlights their work and what they've really done in the course that sets them apart, that makes them unique. And so, so our transcript is now going to be one page and then the portfolio link can also be shared with colleges. So they have, have these two pieces that they can look at now. It gives a more holistic picture of this child who is trying to attend this college or in whatever other application they can think to use it. It could be shared with anyone. It's their portfolio, they take it with them. And so the model that I used, Google Sites, because we already have Google Apps for Education. It's really easy to integrate that into their day. It's something they were already using. And so that was sort of my plan for that.
Amy?
So your predecessor last year talked about sort of the challenges and the benefits of having a relatively high special education population. And since you're new and probably have come into fresh eyes, I'd love to hear your take on that situation and what it's like.
Well, so my background, I was, I was an EL teacher for 10 years and I think that that kind of shapes my perception of what we see as differences. So are there challenges? Yes, but they're all very meetable. So I think we're at 40% of our population is enrolled in the special education program at Arcadia. But we have excellent teachers and an excellent program. And so I see it more as an opportunity. We have, it, good teaching for students who are in special education tends to be good teaching in general. And so it's kind of an excellent opportunity for us to be able to look at how we do school across the board. How do we support students? How do we engage them in the curriculum? How do we engage them in their own learning and help them to advocate for themselves? So, so yeah, I don't know if that, does that answer your question? Okay.
No, great answer. Thank you. Good question, Amy. Other questions, comments?
I had one question about enrollment. I mean, we all understand how critical that is to the, to the school. And I was wondering if you, if it's a number you know of what, how many students or what percent of your students come from outside the Northfield Public School District boundaries?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I can certainly.
No, that's fine. I, and you know, certainly laudable goal to continue to increase your enrollment and wondered if you had any sort of vision as to how you might have the opportunity to grow the enrollment, which we understand is key.
Right. Well, right now, it's interesting because we have some grades that have wait lists. So seventh and ninth grade are wait lists and sixth and 11th, we have six spots available in each of those grades to get us to the 118 that is sort of, or sorry, the 18 that is sort of the goal for each grade level. So I think part of it is having our students be out in the community more, going places, sort of showing off what we can do. Certainly, we have a wonderful relationship with Prairie Creek and our students often will do things there. We had a service day this year already where they went and did projects with students at Prairie Creek. We looked at Nurse Strand. We have the eighth graders from the Cannon River STEM School in Faribault are coming to visit in, at the end of February. We do have people coming from all over the area, from Prior Lake, from Eagan, from Farmington, from Owatonna, Medford. So we do have people coming from quite a few different places. We haven't quite figured out how to actively reach out to some of those closer places. I think they tried the postcard strategy last year and I think we're probably going to do send postcards to fifth and eighth graders this year again, from Faribault, Northfield, Lonsdale, Farmington, some of those surrounding communities. But.
Yeah, excellent. Thank you. So any other final questions or comments? Well, thank you, Laura, and welcome. We appreciated the report and we look forward to seeing you next year.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, so we can now move on for financial forecast and 2020, 2021 general fund budget plan. Here to present that is Director of Finance Val Murtagist. Welcome, Val.
Thank you.
No, just go up under window, all the way up to the right.
Good evening. So I'm going to talk through the financial forecast and our budget plan for this spring. So this is just kind of the topics that I will cover throughout the presentation. This is pretty similar to what I've presented in prior years. So we'll talk a little bit about the financial cycle that we have here in the district and why it works well. The known parameters that go into the projection and then all of the projections and assumptions that we're using to model that and what that looks like for 2020, 21, and then the budget presentation timeline. So this is the financial cycle that we have used in this district for as long as I've been in the position and probably a little bit before that. I think it works really well for a couple of reasons. It allows me the opportunity to be in front of you and informing the board and the community and our stakeholders at multiple points throughout the year of where we're at and allows us to be always analyzing and responding if things are changing. So we are in the red right now doing the financial projection and really it works very smoothly. So all of the assumptions that go into this projection really set up the budget process for this spring. Obviously, the legislative piece is our biggest component and unknown at this point. Actually, not for this year because it's not funding year, but that's usually our bigger, our bigger piece that we're kind of waiting for. And we do that, it actually says. And we do that, it actually says April through June, but that's changing a little bit this year due to my timeline. And then after the year's completed and we go through the audit, staff have been hired, we've got our October 1 enrollment finalized fund balance and all of those pieces, we take all of that information into the revised budget. And then it kind of just starts all over again. So it really just allows me the opportunity to be accountable, which I appreciate and constantly on top of it. This is actually a topic that I present at Masbo, the Minnesota Association of School Business Officials, and train newer business managers who are interested in learning about financial projection and kind of the tools to do that. So it's been a good experience helping them walk through that. So here's what we do know. Most of the time, I feel like I'm talking about what I don't know. So here's what I do know. We ended the 1819 school year with 19.3% unassigned fund balance. We added the Achievement and Integration Program, which is a reminder that is 70% funded by state aid and 30% funded by our levy. The revised budget that was approved in December plans for about a $608,000 spend down. Our enrollment is declining slightly. We are including in our financial projection, we also included it last year, the additional cost for the new elementary school and the additional square footage and custodial staff and utilities and those sorts of things. And 80% of our budget is salary and benefits. We are obviously a people business. And enrollment drives over 70% of our total revenue. So that's a pretty significant piece. And when we're even in slightly declining enrollment, it's very impactful, which I'll talk through in the next couple of slides. So this is our current enrollment projection. This is obviously a lot of numbers to look at, so I'll just point out a handful of them. The 1819 school year, so last school year, we ended with 4,050 students. This was our eighth year of increased enrollment, but you can see it was six students more than the prior year, which was pretty minimal compared to the jumps we had seen prior to that. The enrollment model that we use obviously relies pretty heavily on historical trends and what we've been seeing. So my revised budget last year had actually projected about 4,070 students. So we actually ended last year lower than I had anticipated. And with the October 1 enrollment count and the new enrollment projection, it is showing that we're declining. The October 1 enrollment this year was about 43 students, less than our October 1 last year, just actual seat count. Again, our revenue is generated off average daily membership and the weighting of 712, but actual students in the seats is about 43 less as of October 1. And so you can see that that's about 50 kids that we're projecting to be less this year, so ending this fiscal year. The one thing that you will notice is our secondary numbers are still increasing, and this is lining up pretty much exactly with what our demographic study suggested about six year, I think we're in our sixth year of it now. She suggested we would go down about 200 students over a 10-year period, but our elementary numbers would go down and our secondary numbers would increase. And you can see that that's exactly what's happening. I will say the positive side to that is that our 7 through 12 numbers are weighted at 1.2. So it does slow the actual adjusted pupil unit decline slightly, which is helpful, but still very impactful for the budget. So here are some of the assumptions that go into the model. The board has set a goal of 16% unassigned fund balance as a percentage of our total expenditures. We are planning to continue to grow our long-term facility maintenance fund balance. With the ongoing bond projects, we are actually going to utilize some of those funds for the projects to help supplement some of the things, just do the timing of already being under construction. So that will change a little, slightly, but overall, that is our plan for that fund balance. For revenue specifically, we know for next year, we'll have 2% increase in the basic formula. As a reminder, that, just that one state formula is about 55% of our total revenue. Declining enrollment obviously plays into the revenue assumption. Referendum, we do have the automatic inflationary increase that was approved by the voters. That averages about 2% a year, and so that's what's built into the model. We have about a 4% increase in special ed funding each year. There's a 4% growth amount built into the statute. But again, the formula, as I've probably said ad nauseam, is very complex. We have seen a pretty significant growth in our special ed expenditures, which has meant that that's grown at 4% or a little more, particularly our special education transportation, which is reimbursed at 100%, or basically 100%. So that is a little bit higher increase than I've maybe had in the past, just based on our historical trends currently. And then, as always, the federal funding, we're just holding flat. It's been very consistent the last couple of years, and we aren't really anticipating any changes at this point for that. And that's a total of 3% of the total budget, revenue budget. On the expenditure side, the total salary benefits for all groups is about 2.42%, and that is partially with increases and some offsetting decreases. We do have about $200,000 built in for the additional custodial staff with the new elementary school and kind of shuffling some of that around, as well as a teaching and learning department restructure. So all of those pieces going in to that number. We have about a 2% increase for all of the non-salaried, so the classroom supplies, textbooks, utilities, those sorts of things. There is a slightly higher increase specifically for the utilities for the new building, but the average overall was about 2%. We did do a 3% increase for our transportation. Like I mentioned, we've seen a little bigger swing with our special ed transportation. So just accounting for that and being a little conservative on that side. And then it also includes moving $300,000 of our existing technology salaries into our operating capital. So not additional $300,000, just moving which fund, so it frees up some of the general fund dollars to kind of slow down what I'm going to show you here on the next slide. So this is the model, fairly simplified as you can imagine, so it fits on one slide. This first column is where we actually landed for 1819. This is our current budget, so the one that was just approved in December, and then three years of forecast. I don't really like to show more than three years because pretty much every financial model that you will ever run looks like the sky's falling in year four and five, just due to the nature of school funding and the way that that forecasting works. So, and there are quite a few decision points in the next three years, let alone the next five, so. So what that looks like for us, again, we're projecting about a $608,000 spend down for this current fiscal year and ending at 17.48% unassigned fund balance. Again, this is the new enrollment projection, so we're looking at about $57 million in revenue. And I want to point this out, so you can see that that's only about $100,000 increase, which seems a little dramatic. But please keep in mind that the 1920 number includes several one-time revenue sources. So the $312,000 sale of the iPads included in there, the $600,000 lease purchase financing for the Gleason properties included. So there are a couple of things in there that are inflating it, but it is still obviously increasing at a slower rate than we've seen historically due to the enrollment. Expenditures, we're looking at about $58.7 million. And so that is about a $1.66 million expenditures over revenue, which puts us at about 15.86% fund balance, which is under the board's goal of 16%. This does also include moving about $1.2 million of our assigned fund balance into unassigned to cover some of the special ed increase that we've seen and some of our other post-employment benefits. You might recall several years ago, we reserved some of our funding specifically to help cover our other post-employment benefits. Our OPEB liability in total is about $14 million. Again, that's a long-term liability to be paid over the next 30 years with lots of variables in it. And so we had reserved some of our funding just to ensure we can meet those payments. And so that is available to us to move to the unassigned. All right. I forgot to talk about the kindergarten enrollment. That's in my narrative. I must swing back to that real quick, sorry. The other piece with the elementary decline that we look at is the kindergarten enrollment. And we, on average, over the years, have brought in about 35% of the total Rice County births. And I included in the narrative the screenshot from my model of the historical Rice County births, and you can see they've been declining. But 2014 in particular is quite low, and that will be our incoming kindergarten class. So I am anticipating in addition to just having smaller elementary classes, that our kindergarten will be probably a little smaller next year. You can see 2015 rebounds, so it should stabilize, but we should have one year that's got a smaller class. And again, all of this is based on historical. So if we have more kids open enrolling, that's pretty hard to take into consideration just because of the circumstances that we don't have control over and we're never sure when that might happen. But that's the current projection and just one of the reasons that the kindergarten number looks a little bit lower. So I'm sorry I missed that when I was going to. So overall, obviously, the 15.86 is below the goal, which means a couple of things. For the 2020-21 school year, this is exactly where we've been projecting. I went back and looked at my forecast from last year, and I was actually projecting ending at 14.3% in 2020-21 instead of 15.86. So again, a little bit, a little bit more positive, which is good, but it still is below the goal. So at the current time, I'm recommending that we go through the program-based budget reduction process that the district has used historically, likely next winter, for the 21-22 school year. I didn't put the total in here, but I will tell you the 9.25% to get that up to 16 was about $4 million of a budget reduction. Again, a lot of that's dependent on how 1920 actually shakes out once we go through the audit and any other legislative changes that they may or may not do this session. So there are some things to have in between now and then. So I don't want anyone to lock that number in, but just so you're aware of what it is looking like currently. So the budget schedule will be moved up this spring. I will be on leave starting the end of April, and so, which is pretty much the time I'm presenting budgets. So we will be doing the operating capital and LTFM budget at the next board meeting, which actually works out really well. We've typically done that one in February. We meet in December with the capital committee, so that's pretty much already well on its way. February, the first meeting in February will be the kind of miscellaneous debt service. Actually, the trust fund on here is technically not going to be anymore because that is part of the GASB 84 change that will be in the general fund now. And then the internal service fund. The second meeting in February will be child nutrition and community services. We only have one meeting in March typically, and so that will be the general fund budget. And then that first meeting in April will be the budget book and approving all of the budgets together. So just know that we're kind of moving that all up. This is a good year to do it since it's not technically a funding year, so we have some of those things already locked in. I think if it goes well, there's interest in maybe keeping it this way, just because it's nice to get ahead of it. Staff have, you know, more expectations before they leave for the year, and it just kind of moves everything up so we can get started on the next year, even a little sooner, so. One of the things that I appreciate about this district is our commitment to stewardship. I've presented this multiple times, and this is obviously the closest we've been to 16%, which is still not quite there, but that is where we're projected to be. And it's honestly my privilege to work in a district that takes that commitment so seriously. It makes my job a lot easier. So I will gladly take any questions you have on the production.
Thank you, Val. I'm sure you planned your pregnancy around a non-funding year or something.
Yep.
But I agree, I think the schedule and calendar is really excellent. So it's great to see it, you know, laid out there, and we're excited about how that will progress. And again, I think, you know, I've talked to other districts and they don't go through this process like we do. And so what we sort of have taken for granted, you know, I think we are definitely the envy of some other communities that haven't really used this approach for, obviously, a variety of reasons that they do that. But when I talk about our budget process to other board members, they are really interested in how we do this, so thank you. So, board members, questions? Noel?
Once again, we need to celebrate the job you do as a financial director. Thank you so much. I have a question regarding moving salaries into capital.
Mm-hmm.
Seems inappropriate.
There's actually a statute provision that specifically allows only technology salaries. So those are the only ones we could ever do.
And they are?
Like our network administrator, assistant network administrator, technically, all the technicians qualify. The only person that would not qualify would be our director of technology, but otherwise, all of the day-to-day tech staff do qualify.
Thank you.
And Noel, that is a strategy that we've used over the years. We've moved those technology salaries in and out of capital over time. And one of the reasons we thought that this was a good year to do that is that we have so many projects happening next summer associated with the bond, that there'll be a difficulty in administering any other kinds of capital projects. And so we felt that especially given our opportunity to be proactive, moving into what appears to be a budget reduction phase, this would free some dollars in the general fund. And again, we've been very careful over the years to use the resources that we have to protect that general fund and protect the unassigned fund balance. And because of the construction projects next year and the limited staff time to do additional capital projects, it seems like a good time to do that.
I agree.
Other questions, comments? Rob?
Okay, gloomy question, I guess. So as we've approached this point in the past, we've had kind of unexpected increases in enrollment, and then we had another levy referendum, so we increased our voter approval, but we're now at the maximum for the voter-approved and we're going down in enrollment. So what other, are we entering a cycle of just cuts every year, or is there, do you see other ways out of this situation?
Excellent question. That's an excellent question. So the program-based budget reduction will obviously be the first step of that, just to make sure we're at a minimum, right sizing it for that year. Matt and I... Matt and I have had multiple conversations about modifying the budget process as it is right now to essentially propose a budget balance or a balanced budget every single year. There's a lot of things that probably have to occur for that actual process to be in place. One of the things that I think I've talked about here is we've been slowly implementing the Smarter School Spending Framework, which is a program started by the GFOA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association, sorry, that really looks at ensuring that your budget dollars are being spent and prioritized on things that tie to your mission and vision and really having a program review cycle to ensure that we're not just rolling things over from year to year because that's how it's always been done. But those things really take time to make sure we're implementing them the right way and having everybody on board and supporting that way moving forward. So that will be part of it as well. It's really ensuring that we're, we'll do a deep dive during the budget reduction process to really analyze our spending and sort of recommit to what our priorities are. And then making sure that we're maintaining that in an ongoing way rather than having kind of this big reduction of reduction every year, more of an ongoing annual maintenance type thing. But that's my goal. There's a lot of things that'll happen between now and then, but that's how I would envision it so that it's not, you know, kind of this coming up to a cliff and feeling like you're falling off, that it's a little more predictable for staff.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions, comments? Ellen?
So excellent report, thank you. I think this is probably a question more for Dr. Hillman, but I'm curious. So those of us who've gone through it and understand what the program-based budgeting process is like. We have, you know, spent a lot of time on a strategic plan with near and long-term priorities and thinking about some of those pieces. How would those fit into, and I know that this is looking out of ways, but I'm just curious if you've given that some thought.
So the strategic plan has been used to guide all of our decision-making. And we've tried in many of your decisions to tie exactly to what part of the strategic plan, both the long-term and the near-term priorities as to why we're making a recommendation to you. And I would see that that would be the same approach that we would use in this process. I do think the strategic plan, believe it or not, will be four years old at the end of this year. And I, we are looking at, we're looking at a potential board retreat later this year to take a look at that strategic plan and to make sure that those priorities that we adopted based on the input of hundreds and hundreds of people a few years ago are still the exact, where we exactly need to be. As you know, with program-based budgeting, we will identify the amount of dollars that would need to be reduced that is then allocated over several different program areas. And if you remember, we do give each of those budget teams a set of parameters and protocols. And I would see us using the strategic plan as these are the priorities of things that we would want to maintain and keep. And of course, then, when we go through the process in the final step over several months with hundreds of people being involved in that process, you would also be able to use the strategic plan to finalize your approval of both the reductions. And then, of course, one of the important parts of a budget reduction process or the program-based budgeting process are the restoration packages. So that as, if the state were to provide us additional dollars, that as things are added back, those can be prioritized with the strategic plan in mind. So that's how I envision it right now. We are several months away from, you know, 10 months away from starting a process like this. And I think that having an opportunity to take a look at that strategic plan for years and it's gonna be something that's gonna be important for us to clarify our projects moving forward.
Other questions, comments? Noel?
Remind me again of the federal government's commitment to special education. What's their percentage?
What they were supposed to do, what they promised. I believe it was up to 40%, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, how much are the?
Between 7 and 9.
Okay. And who makes up the difference?
We do.
Thank you. I knew the answer, but I just wanted to hear it publicly.
Yeah.
And if I can add on to that, this is not, as I look at board members, this is not a shock. This is what we have been projecting for a long time. We have been projecting that when we passed the 2011 referendum, we had promised the community we would be able to make it three, I believe it was three more years before we'd have to look at any budget reductions. We were very fortunate to see an increase in enrollment and some other strategies that we used at that time to where we made it well beyond that. In 2017, we were projecting some budget reductions as I became the superintendent, coming from the Director of Administrative Services role into the superintendency. Again, some increased enrollment and some other budget, some good, sound financial management allowed us to avoid any reductions at that point, and we were able to pass another operating levy. And what we're projecting right now is exactly what we said for the 2017 referendum. The Northfield community has stepped in and taken over the responsibility of the state of Minnesota. In the last 27 years, we have received an inflationary increase to the per pupil basic formula only five times. So if you put that in baseball parlance, we're batting about, what, 115 or something like that. We have been able to avoid this kind of discussion far longer than most other districts. At this point, it'll be nearly a decade. And if we think about districts around us, they have gone through multiple budget reduction processes at this point. But even the investment in education that Northfield has done, which is nearly unparalleled by many other communities, we cannot keep winning the race when the deck is stacked against us by not receiving full funding of education. We've got two pieces that are an issue. The per pupil basic funding formula has not kept up with inflation, as we have said hundreds of times probably. And special education is nearing a crisis. We are seeing, even with a 4% increase in the funding from the state, we are eclipsing that easily. Our average increase in special education cost has been between 6 and 8% per year, year over year, when the increase in the funding is only 4%. Now, these are morally imperative programs to serve children with disabilities. Of course, we're going to do it. However, you just have to do basic math to know that you cannot keep it up for a long period of time. We welcomed the governor's proposal, which was adopted in trying to slow the cross-subsidy. But right now, our special education cross-subsidy is $6 million on a $56 million expenditure budget. So we have these factors that outside of Northfield have really created a dramatic situation in a lot of districts. And we have been able to avoid it because of our local community's investment. We've done everything we told them that we would do. We said we would maintain the programming until we hit a 16% fund balance. And that is right where we're at. So we are now at a point where we have some difficult decisions ahead of us. We will continue to work to be good stewards and be reasonable. We'll be doing some restructuring and some other things that can try to have a positive influence on the fund balance because, of course, just as quickly as the fund balance can go, when you make adjustments, it can also have that cascading effect over several years. We are in a position of strength to handle this because we worked very hard to have a strong fund balance. But we are at the end of that rope unless we are to see some increase in our enrollment or a miracle at the legislature. And I think that we aren't believing in miracles at the legislature very much, right? So my message is that we are in a position of strength to handle this moving forward because of the good financial management that we've had to this point. And what we've done is really unheard of, having nearly a decade without any kind of budget reductions and really just maintaining our high-quality programming. So while this is not news that we would prefer to be sharing with you, we share it with you with confidence that we have a process that we know is fair, that is proactive, that involves the community, and we know how to do it. We will do it in a way that will really focus on making sure that we maintain as much as we can for kids moving forward. We have a legislative session coming up. We have a, the most recent state financial forecast shows that they have increased their rainy day fund and that their fund balance, if you will, has increased yet again. We are hearing from our people out in St. Paul that there's very little chance of getting any additional funding because it's not technically a funding year. Our organizations will be advocating for another 1% increase, which is not nearly enough, right? We are looking at some other pieces to try to encourage the legislature to tie some of these formulas to inflation. We go and lobby every year, but we are at a point where, we are at the point that we have told people we would be at for some time. And so I know it doesn't shock, you know, folks in this room. But we are doing, we have done everything we can to manage the district's finances in a sound manner despite the state chronically underfunding education for the last 30 years. And I'll leave it at that for now.
Excellent, thank you. Other final questions or comments board members have? Thank you, Val. Always such a really good report and such a, you know, you just really have an ability to explain the numbers and to understand them, and we appreciate the proactive nature you're taking to what's coming. Thank you. Okay. So we will move on to our next item for discussion, which is a late start update. Dr. Hillman is going to start the discussion and we will lead in and have a good discussion on this issue.
So as you know, we have started this discussion, well, we've been having this discussion for, since 2014 when Dr. Brian Hoff first brought it to the board's attention around the research, specifically from the University of Minnesota and other places that focus on the benefits that high school students especially have academically, psychologically, emotionally when they're able to get a school schedule that aligns with their changed circadian rhythm. So as you recall, last winter, we had a committee. A couple of board members were on that committee. Dr. Hoff was on that committee, some staff members, some community members, who reviewed the research and made the recommendation that we continue moving forward with the discussion to create a draft plan and to be able to have a deeper discussion about the possibility of starting school later, especially for our secondary students. So this fall, we know that we needed to have some parameters around this. We've tried to look at what could the starting school time be? What could an ending school time be if we were to push our start back and maintain the same number of instructional minutes that we've had in the past? We've shared that with the community. We had some robust feedback. We had two in-person sessions with the community. We had, well, more than 150 people attend those sessions. We had individual face-to-face meetings at each building. We also did an online survey of all those stakeholder groups, including our students, which we had a substantial amount of high school students participate in the online survey, and about 30 who came together for a face-to-face discussion. And so in December, we held a work session in which we sat in this room. You had a chance to hear about all of the feedback that we had received about the conceptual timeframe and the conceptual schedule. You had an opportunity to hear directly from Benjamin Buss about the challenges that modifying our current schedule could play in terms of the transportation system, a very finely tuned transportation system. And so one other piece that has happened since then is that through an interesting array of things, we had a chance to have a conference call with Dr. Kyla Wallstrom, who is the author of the seminal work around starting school later and its impact on students. Had a chance to put that together pretty quickly. And so Chair Pritchard and Director Hardy had a chance to join me on that conference call. We spoke with Dr. Wallstrom for about an hour. We had an opportunity to hear directly from her about how she has seen the research operationalized across the nation. We had a chance to ask some questions about some other research studies that do not show as much of an impact and her perspective on those research studies and what, you know, what was different about them than the, a large body of works. We had a great opportunity to talk about that. I'll ask Julie and Rob to share their perspective on that phone call as we go through. And then the goal of this evening is just to create space for you to reflect upon that discussion that we had in December and all of the feedback that we have received until now. We've told people we were not going to make any kind of decision about this until at least late January of 2020. But I think we're at a point where you can start to inform what is next for this discussion. And so I started in that way really to allow you the space to be the deliberative body that you have always been. I know you're very thoughtful. I know you've put a lot of thought into this. And I look forward to hearing more feedback and your reactions about where we're at now and what you see as the next steps in a process like this.
Excellent, thank you. Board members? Those who are wanting to weigh in. Rob?
Oh, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the phone call with Dr. Wallstrom, if that's okay?
Excellent, yes.
I wrote down a page of notes here, so I'll just go through those. So first thing is her research on the effects of later start times began in 1996. And in 2010, she received a grant from the CDC to expand and continue her research. And she's widely regarded as one of the nation's foremost authorities in the area. I think it's essential to take this scientific research seriously and not dismiss it just because we might not be prepared to act on the recommendations based on that research. It's possible in some cases to find fault with the design of specific studies or to argue in some cases that the results are inconclusive or statistically insignificant. But again and again, the scientific research points to the same conclusion. Adolescents need more sleep, and adjusting school schedules to accommodate adolescent sleep patterns is beneficial for students. This is a conclusion supported by the scientific evidence. Of course, even when the research is clear and compelling, it isn't an easy thing to change either society or individual behavior to bring them in line with what science recommends. And so that's some of the things that we discussed in the call. So we talked specifically at first a lot about the difficulties of routing and scheduling buses to accommodate later start. We talked about the fact that we have a large, geographically spread-out rural district so that some students would be getting on the buses still pretty early in the morning. And she pointed, she acknowledged that this is the case, but stressed that any increase in sleep time is beneficial. So even if they're not, if it's differential between geographical areas, students are still going to be getting more sleep. What I found very interesting about her research is that, you know, we hear about the fact that this was done in some of the suburbs of Minneapolis and in Minneapolis. But she also studied, in her study, she studied both urban, suburban, and rural districts. So I was very interested in the case of Teton County, Wyoming, a school district which covers, the buses, I think, cover about 1,500 miles a day or something like that. Huge district. It has fewer, it's a little bit smaller than Northfield though in terms of student numbers, but it has roughly the same percentage of free and reduced-price lunch students. So it's a similar district both geographically, I mean, not really geographically because we don't have a gigantic national park. But it's, the student population is roughly 65% white, 30% Hispanic. So it's different from some of the suburban ones we're looking at. And there, she found a dramatic increase, like 70%, I'm sorry, decrease, 70% decrease in teen-involved car accidents. So if you think about the huge rural areas that students may be driving through, that's one area where the decrease, where the benefit was really dramatic. And there was a decrease in tardiness and an increase in GPA. So, you know, we were looking at someplace other than Edina to compare. And I think this shows, I mean, very dramatic results. However, in that, the sports issue still comes up in that case. There's still some sports such as Alpine Ski, which meet before school. So they have, I don't know if they've been able to solve that problem in Wyoming. We discussed the issue of after-school activities, employment, and homework. She suggested, you know, looking at things like shorter practices, more efficient scheduling of the facilities, and also looking at the type and amount of homework being assigned to make sure that it's appropriate. Because if we can reduce the time spent on homework, we might be able to alleviate some of that pressure. One thing that she said that really impressed me is that it's important to make this a community conversation involving coaches and employers. And I think, you know, sleep, inadequate sleep is a factor, can be a factor in depression, accidents, obesity, other health issues. So I think this is really a public health issue. And in so many, as in so many other cases like Gunnar Island, schools are being asked to solve the society's public health problems. And I think we have to do what we can, but I think we need to maybe start having this conversation as a to do what we can, but I think we need to maybe start having this conversation as a broader community, as a public health issue. And then we talked briefly about the importance of incorporating sleep hygiene in the health curriculum for students. And it's something that she's very excited about and is working on now in her own research. So I think there are things that we can do in that area without changing the schedule at all, where we can at least make students more aware of the importance of sleep. I mean, I went until I was 54 before I had a sleep study. My son had one, you know, last year at 24. So I think these things are kind of catching up on us as a society. And it's something that we all need to look at, not just in the schools. That's what I have.
Excellent. Rob, thank you. Amy?
Our mic's a little tight today.
Yeah.
So, thank you, Rob. That was actually really thorough and very helpful. I've looked at the process that we're doing now, and we've been collecting a lot of pieces. And it's been great, because we keep finding pieces and getting more input. And I think, though, putting the puzzle together is going to take more time. And as we look at all the different pieces, we have a lot of smart people in Northfield, and we have a lot of resources we can tap. But I think there'll be a way of putting the pieces together to make this work. I am, I've done a lot of reading on my own. I'm very convinced that sleep is an important thing for our teenagers. And trying to get that to work out, I'm not ready to let this drop, just because there's a few bumps in the road at this point, when we're trying to figure out the bus schedule and all the athletic pieces and all of those other pieces. So I think we need to keep working on the puzzle and seeing how the pieces might fit together. With so many people in town, we're not going to make everybody happy, but I think our main goal is to provide the best educational environment for all of our students. And also, I keep thinking what Rob said at our meeting, our work session, about how the smart kids are still going to get everything done and still get the good grades and still, they'll be fine whether or not we change sleeping. They'll probably be happy to get more sleep. But it's really, the kids that will be most helped are the ones that are not in the top tier. They're the ones that are struggling a bit more. They're also the ones in the achievement gap. And the achievement gap is something we've talked a lot about wanting to narrow. And I really think working to figure out how we can solve the problem about later sleep time will help us with narrowing the achievement gap as well.
Great. Thank you. Other questions, comments? Ellen?
So, thank you again, Rob, because that was really helpful. And I'm similar to Amy, thinking, I had found the research compelling, but I was trying to think about what other levers do we have. And so what was really helpful, Rob, when you were talking through the notes, was thinking about the pieces that we have heard, like homework, you know, and the sport scheduling. And getting back to Amy's point is that I think if we can spend some more time trying to figure out how as a whole can we mitigate some of these challenges, and then are there other ways that we can think about the schedule, too? I think it was very eye-opening for me, the, hearing Nancy representing Benjamin Buss and talking about their guiding principles and how much thought they put into their schedule, and thinking about that we don't, you know, we wanted it to keep it cost-neutral. And so I ended the work session thinking, I don't know how we could keep it cost-neutral. So, but I think if we have these other levers that we start to think about, in terms of the school day, in terms of the, like, being open to some things that we have that have been strengths of the district that we can capitalize on, like, we've always had the longest school day, you know, is that, is that something we need to think differently about? The homework piece, you know, and these, what's essential, and the coaching piece. So it was really helpful to hear that that's been part of Kyla's research, and also the Wyoming study, you know, having something to think about that's rural, that gives us, you know, something that also, I think, in terms of this community conversation, that that's the other piece. While we've gathered a lot of input from people, I don't know, in terms of thinking about the public health, if that, if that has come through as strongly as all of the moving parts that are problems.
Excellent. Thank you. Other questions, comments, board members have? Tom?
And then there's always someone in the group who doesn't necessarily go along with everything. So, can I read?
Absolutely.
Okay. So I've read the parent, teacher, and student comments. Talked to parents, talked to my kids, who are both in high school, talked to their friends, read about the research and attended public input sessions. There are a lot of thoughtful comments and arguments on both sides. In the end, not everyone will be happy. While there may be benefits to sleeping late for kids and for all of us, there are many other variables and factors that can affect our performance over the course of the day. If we isolate and focus on one aspect, in this case, sleep, to the exclusion of all other possibilities, then that one alone appears to be the end-all, be-all solution, like many other solution de jour over the years that have been as a result of their own convincing studies. Farmington Schools recently dealt with school start times, and in the face of all the late start conversation, decided to start high school classes earlier. Several years ago, the Minneapolis Schools changed their start time from 7:15 a.m. to 8:45 a.m. With that big of a change, and one from an unusually early start time, I would have expected there to be a substantial improvement in academic performance, yet the data shows an insignificant change. Some schools show similar results to Minneapolis, while other schools show improvements. How do we reconcile it all? Is it simply due to sleep, or are there other variables and factors that change, too? Whether that perhaps unique to the given school? Many parents and students support the later start. For many families and kids, the change will have a minimal impact on their life. For most, though, the bigger impact may be with the later-ending times and the resulting ripple effect on home life and schedules. In conversations with other parents about school issues over the years, I don't remember anything about the need to start school later. It wasn't on my mind, and it doesn't seem to be the desire. The change has been driven by parent demand. Now that it is being contemplated, however, the impact on the lives of many kids and families could be dramatic. That message came through in the written comments and at public input sessions. For me personally, this wouldn't have an impact. My boys are older and can get to school on their own. However, for my son, he would lose an hour of work per day with a later end time. He is strongly opposed to this. He's also someone who turns off the technology and is asleep by 8:30 at night to get his 10 hours of sleep. When I was a kid, my bedtime was 9:00 p.m. and then eventually 10:00 p.m., not midnight or later. Until recently, late start Wednesday cost me an hour of work, which I made up by staying late that day or working on the weekend. I have the flexibility to do that. Most families don't. While I can try and imagine the impact a later start schedule would have on others, by not walking in their shoes, I can truly internalize what that means to them or the difficulties that result. I also think there may, there are many who would prefer an early dismissal Friday rather than a late start Wednesday, similar to what other schools have. Some say that in years or so, after changes, people have things figured out. Maybe, maybe not. Maybe there are still hardships, but fighting it is hopeless, so they silently give up. The seven people in this room can make a decision that will affect the lives of thousands in the community in a real and unique way. We can force them to change the way they lead their lives, to impose a change on them that takes away what a little control they already have. Without an overwhelming and clear benefit, I can't support that. All that said, this discussion is enlightening and fruitful. We have heard yet again about the importance of good night sleep. We have learned yet again about the importance and impact of sports and activities. We have been reminded once again of our inadequate facilities. We have been made aware once again of the impact our decisions have on the lives of real people. We're better and wiser for that.
Excellent. Thank you for that perspective. Other board members? No?
I'm in a real condundrum on this one.
Make sure your mic's on. We'll pull it towards you, please. There you go. Yeah, it's on. Just make sure it's closer to you.
I'm in a real condundrum on this. I have a page full of notes, and I don't plan to read them. But I do believe that as a board member, I've got responsibility both to student achievement and for the community's social impact. And I think both of them are going to be significant. It seems to me that what we have is trying to synchronize the body clock of the student to the start time of the district. And if that were as simple as it was, I think it'd be done by now. But to me, the impact, as Tom said, it's got a lot of socially impact, societal impact. And I can't ignore that. So I guess my bottom line is, I understand the, I think I know the impact of this, but I also know, of a late start, but I also know the impact it'll have on the society and the culture of the community. So my advice is let's not rush into it. And I think that's not the end of my notes, but I'll stop there.
Great. Thanks. Is everyone waiting with comments they want to make? Jeff?
I guess I didn't say anything. You know, when you look at the times that you had in the district, you know, it was all over. We've had, and I went to school here, I just remember getting to school, for some reason, I think it was right before 8 o'clock. And so we start at 7:50, and we're out at 2:45. And you look at, you know, I always like to use as a benchmark, you know, the conference, you know. And I think that really, Winona is the only one that has, what, 8:30? And one of the three schools in Rochester, I mean, they're like 7:40, aren't they? So I look at that as a benchmark. But I mean, I see, in talking to, about sports, because that's a responsibility to look at, I mean, either way, if you're doing a shift less than a half an hour, it certainly makes a lot of sense. So I mean, I, you know, I think that, is it a trend, you know, yes and no? Is it based off of, you know, input from somebody coming, you know, and, no, I want earlier start times? No. I mean, it's a premise off of the sleep study, which is, you know, not terrible. But I realize, I talked about before, I mean, I'd like to see some more pain points of people saying that they're not. Really, anybody that I talked to really wasn't too interested in any kind of change. But I think if you did change something from 7:50 start, I wouldn't really be in favor of anything after 8:30. And if we have a school dismissal time right now of quarter to 3, you know, nothing later than 3:15. So I mean, that's a change. And I think that, you know, a lot of these kinds, and you're talking about kids, you know, I think of, you know, kids that need to go home and help raise a family, kids that's another half an hour. If I've got out of school at quarter to 3, boom, I can be at work, I can start working somewhere at 3. So I mean, yeah, I mean, it's a half an hour shift either way, if you're not going to, or even 40 minutes. But if you're, you know, what are the benefits of that, you know? And I don't know, is that a bit of a trend? I mean, yeah, I think so. Is there a huge pain for change? I mean, I don't see it so far. But, you know, what's a reasonable change? And if you're not going to change in more than a half an hour, you know, it's probably not. But I mean, 7:50 to nothing later than 8:30. You know, I suppose that would be reasonable, but I think, you know, you have to, and I don't know how really, being from here, you know, being around Wyoming, I mean, a big district like that, I think, this is a highly academic area, if you haven't noticed. And I think that Northfield's its own kind of little, you know, segment of a different kind of educational culture, I think, too, of people. And I think that, I don't know who you compare us with, because we're much more academically driven than most areas. But, you know, and all of those people that want to get out, and you're talking about, you know, the safety piece of, you know, a lot of times in the evening, you've got to, you know, in the morning, you've got to pick people, kids up, you know, in the dark anyway. But I certainly don't like pushing the idea of getting kids home later on a bus or anywhere else when it's dark out. So, you know, I guess, change? Yeah, a little bit, but not too much. And is that an ongoing debate? And is it a trend? Yeah. But I didn't really hear, you know, a ton of pain, you know, from people that I talked to about making a change. So.
Amy?
I just want to add one thing to what I've mentioned before. Well, I think it's good to keep looking at how to put the puzzle pieces together and working with the bus companies to see if there are creative ways to solve the busing issues. One of the things that Nancy from the bus company said, a simple way of solving this is just to move everything by whatever amount of time, you know, 40 minutes, and just keep the bus schedules the way they are now, but just make all of the schools start that much later. And I know that's something we haven't researched yet, because we've been talking about, you know, giving the elementary schools an earlier start time. But I'd like to sort of put that out there, that we shouldn't just discount that possibility. If we think that having a later high school start time is important, maybe we can move the high school to 8:30 and the elementary schools later pass that. And just to see what sort of feedback we would get from the community with that approach, because we haven't asked them about that approach.
So I do want to share, it was interesting. We talked about that possibility with Dr. Walstrom, and she recommended that the research would not support that. In fact, suggested that could potentially be not good for elementary kids, which is one of the first times that we had really delved into that part. It's not something that we maybe shouldn't, but I think she talked about that the rate of return was quite substantially less. What do you think about pushing elementary students back later? Because their circadian rhythm is ready, you know, to be there early in the morning. So just, that's an interesting part. And then the one other thing, which is Jeff, that I want to share is that we, in the Big Nine, we know that Winona has been using a later start time for many years. The Mankato School Board recently voted to move their high schools to 8:35 start time, ending at 3:25. So they're going to have a very long day. Now, to be fair, it wasn't just an altruistic discussion in Mankato. They are growing at a pretty substantial rate, and they needed to add a full second-tier bus system. So they were already making another change, and they were able to make this change in conjunction. We know that the Rochester School Board has seen two proposals, one of which would start school at 8:45, and again, get out around 3:50. They have not made their decision yet. I think they're a little bit down the line. But those are the Big Nine schools that we know who are looking at it. And I do think there's a fair part to considering, as I've looked at why each school or district has made a decision to change or not to change, there are usually many other factors. I think we're one of the few that are really looking at this from a true altruistic perspective, you know, about the research and operationalizing it for children. I think a number of the other places that have done this to this point have had another factor that helped them accelerate it, right? So it was either the addition of another school, or there was a need to modify their busing system, some other things where they were able to do both at the same time. So just to clarify about the Big Nine, that, you know, we could see by the end of, you know, the spring to where five of the high schools are starting at eight, well, six of the high schools are starting, you know, after 8:30. So just a couple of clarifying points there.
Rob?
Jeff, you mentioned a possibility that you might be willing to consider of starting at 8:30 and ending at 3:15.
I'm just using that as a benchmark.
Yeah, as an example. But let's say that might require rethinking some of the scheduling and maybe compressing the periods during the day. So I asked Dr. Walstrom about, so you've got a trade-off there. You have fewer contact minutes during the day in exchange for starting later. So which one gives you the better, the greater benefit, more contact minutes or starting later? And that, she has not researched that, and she wasn't aware of any research on that issue. So there are still questions that I don't think we can answer. I think the one thing we have a clear answer on is that adolescents need more sleep, and that one way of doing that is to move back the start time. But we don't, but there's so many other sort of research questions. don't, but there's so many other sort of research questions that can't really be answered. So I suppose, well, I don't know where to go with that, because we don't have the answers.
Part of that, too, I mean, if you wanted to shorten the day, what are your options with that, too?
So we do have a substantial amount of additional minutes above and beyond what is required by the state. So there's two parts. There's the part that you have to have at least 165 school days, and that you need to have at least 1,020 hours of instruction for students who are secondary students. So we have the ability, I think, if I remember correctly, I calculated, we could reduce our instructional day by 20 some minutes and still meet the requirement. Now, in the old days, one of the things that you were concerned about was if you had snow days and things like that, that could impact the bottom line of the minutes in the days. As we had known even last year, which, which is hopefully a once in a couple of hundred years winter, right? We still made it, you know, to the number of, minimum number of days. And then the advent of using technology to mitigate school closure really does, could put to rest the concern about the number of instructional minutes. So we would have the ability to take a look at shortening the school day. One of the reasons that we haven't done that, you know, until this point, and if I'm hearing people want us to model some of that, and how could it look, is that the couple of times before we've discussed this, that's something that we had brought up, and that we did have feedback from the community saying, no, you know, we're really proud of the length of the school day. But we've also heard in this round, of course, school districts are not static, right? We have new, even though we have the same stakeholder groups, we have new members of those stakeholder groups on a regular basis. We have kids graduating, new people come in. The last time we discussed, discussed this was in 2014. There are a variety of other things, you know, at that point. And so if that is something that the board would like us to look at, we could certainly take a look at the number of instructional minutes. And if you're going to ask us to do that, then what I would recommend is that one of the things that we have heard from some of our high school teachers and some students, is that if, if we were to really think about a completely different schedule at the high school within that 8:30 to 3:15, or whatever the timeframe is, we've had a seven-period day for 40 years, easily, probably longer. And so there are some other scheduling options that could be looked at, that you could take advantage of in terms of, if you were to have a shorter school day, there may be some other ways to leverage when you're looking for one change, to maybe that a couple of them together, as people have suggested, not just pulling one lever. Are we doing a deep dive on what are we assigning for homework? Is the homework that we're assigning valuable and moving the content forward? Is that really what it's doing? Is it truly preparing people, you know, to engage in a more robust discussion or more robust engagement intellectually with the content? There's a number of things that we could talk about if you would like us to extend the discussion and look at some other options than the ones that we have presented to this point.
No.
I want a clarification. The statement made that adolescents need more sleep, my understanding is that we need to match the body clock to, you know, to, yeah, we need to match the, you know, the body rhythm to the start time. And that the alarm, the, the body clock has little regard for the alarm clock.
I would say that last statement. I have understood that, yes, the adolescents need more sleep. One of the ways to help get them more sleep is by matching the schedule with their circadian rhythm, right? So if you, what the research does show is if you start the school day later, adolescents will get more sleep, because you will better align with their circadian. It is, you do want students to get more sleep, but it's really kind of a two-pronged approach. And while we're not going to call on him, I'm looking out of my eye to make sure I said that right, and I'm getting the thumbs up, so.
Thank you.
Yes, we thank Dr. Hoffman, or Dr. Huff for being in the audience tonight. A local physician who has been instrumental in helping us understand not only the issue of circadian rhythm, but lots of other issues around this. So we appreciate his, his invaluable assistance with this, so.
One more point, you know, we always talk about cutting edge and leading edge, and I think there's a lot of people, and there's a lot more changes that are kind of right at the forefront that some of these other school districts are coming up with. And it's not like we need to be the first ones or one of the first ones to do that. So what else are we seeing, you know, for changes? And isn't the really, the big benefit that we want back is, is the learning piece, right? And the more sleep, more productivity, more, and as you mentioned, and that's an excellent report, by the way, there's a lot of, you know, I mean, it's, it's, it can go either way. And I don't think we need to necessarily redesign, I mean, redesign the whole day, but I mean, what would it really take if you started at 8:30 and you're done at 3:15 or 3 o'clock? You know, I don't know. I mean, you're revamping your whole day. And I'm not talking about the elementaries and the middle school stuff. I'm just talking about, you know, the senior high kids. So I just think kids would like to get out of school, you know, 3 o'clock, or until well, be here much longer than that. So, anyway.
It seems like it's a discussion that the conference should be having as a whole.
Do you use it like?
Sorry. I think if the conference were to have this discussion as a whole, because for individual schools, I mean, the, the meets, the games are not going to match up. So I think it is a problem that's, it's hard to do it in isolation. That's what I was, I mean, that's kind of one of the principal things I took away from the conversation with Dr. Wallstrom, is that this has to be a bigger conversation, that it doesn't seem like the seven of us can solve the problem adequately.
You can't do a paradigm shift on your own. And it's like you said, if we used it as a base for conference and brought this out, I mean, that's probably even a, you know, work to see where they're all going. Because then, obviously, with your sporting events and your activities, it's going, most of that's going to be within the conference.
So one thing, I appreciated the opportunity to sit in on the conference call with Dr. Wallstrom. It was a genuine thrill for me, because I, this woman is, is just absolutely amazing in the work that she's done and the experience she has. And what I took away from it was, she is not just, you know, looking at this from research, she has an incredible amount of experience trying to operationalize or understand the operationalization of this, because she has been a superintendent, she's been a principal, I mean, she's done a lot of things. So she really understands the nuts and bolts of running a school district. So I thought that was really interesting. And what was also so interesting is every single district that she has worked with has faced these exact same challenges. And they have found a way to work around it. And they have found a way to make it, to make it work. And I think one of the areas, and I appreciate everybody highlighting so many of the areas, but I think one significant piece that we have highlighted is how compelling the research is. And we know this is good for kids. The research, over and over, really does point to that. And, and, you know, while her research was, was back in, you know, starting in 2000, or her report is 2013, I believe.
And then a '17 update.
And then a '17 update. It only continues to, to have more research that indicates this is, this is really good for kids. The other piece that, of course, she has, has seen over and over again is obviously the inclination to preserve the status quo, because it is very difficult. So a couple of things that I think was important, that Ellen talked about levers, and, and other board members have talked about that as well. But I think if, if we look at the recap of that, really, have we done enough to educate the community? Have we really driven this home hard? And I don't think that the research and the facts are enough to bring it over the finish line. I think that that's a huge piece that has to be there. And I think the other piece is, do we, as a result of this process, which I think has been excellent, we do now, we are armed with what we know are the challenges and, as well as the opportunities. So how do we take what we have now and, and move forward? So a piece to me would be the education of it, is going back and really helping our community once again, and maybe having more people aware now, because we've had so many people weigh in. But have we really done enough to, to, to talk about how significant this is for kids? If we can get our secondary students starting at 8:30, it will be significant. The next piece is transportation. And it was so fascinating, Dr. Wallstrom talking about, there was a community that agonized over turn lanes and what that meant. And it was Northfield. We have an issue where we have a left turn now. And she said, yeah, there is a district that struggled with that. So, so all of the things that are coming up are very common for districts. But they, again, they have, they have continued to work towards, towards the answers. So, so the transportation, and I appreciate Amy's comments around that in terms of, have we really looked at everything with Nancy and the wealth of experience? One thing I think is a benefit, and Tom, I appreciate you so much talking about how valuable this has been for us. We really understand, we have a well-oiled machine in our transportation, and we can feel really good about that. And we talk about how good Benjamin Bus is, and we, we saw that in the work session. But is there other ways that we can, you know, overcome the obstacle of the, of the turn lane and some other things? The other piece that I thought was really interesting was having Joel Olson, our activities director, there. And why we understand that our bus system, we saw it as a well-oiled machine, are our athletic and extracurricular facilities being scheduled as a well-oiled machine? We, Joel Olson talked about the new approach with coaches in terms of doing more classroom and more weight room and, and balancing that against gym time, et cetera. So it have, you know, do we program our facilities as well as we can? And again, that's a real benefit that Tom was talking about in terms of the positives coming out of a, of a process like this. So have we really, do we really do that? The one thing that I know he died and worked on was convening coaches and talking about optimal practice times. And one thing they found is, coaches said, my kids are more alert, our athletes are more alert, our, our, you know, arts performers are more alert. So we find that a shorter practice can, can be beneficial, because everyone is really in the zone, and we're able to, to really maximize a shorter amount of practice time. So again, there is another opportunity. And then the last piece that Dr. Hillman highlighted, and I know Dr. Iverson as well, is the high school schedule. And Dr. Wallstrom talked about communities that have looked at a high school schedule, a block schedule, a skinny schedule, some other areas. So, so really taking what we know are some of the obstacles and the challenges and saying, have we really fully, fully explored that? And I think what that really points to is obviously, and I think board members have really talked about that as well, this is going to take some work. And, and why we really feel very good about the process that has led us to this point, and the opportunities and the challenges that it has, has revealed, I think that we need to reassess. And, and what I'm sensing from board members is the inclination to continue moving forward, but really taking a number of those pieces and delving more deeply into areas where maybe we can make this work if we say 8:30, 3:15, we heard that from the community is possibly palatable. Dr. Wallstrom did say that she didn't recommend an elementary start time later than 8:45, but said, you know, prior to 8:45, she felt in her research was doable. So do we, at this juncture, say, in, in deference to our families and what we, what we acknowledge will be a shift for them, do we say it's off the table for fall of 2020? And we say, let's tell the community that we are so appreciative of the input that they gave us, the feedback that they gave, give us in, in order for us to understand what we still have to, to look at. But we can't do that in a reasonable amount of time and expect that families could, could possibly, you know, be able to get their heads around that as soon as fall of 2020. So do we direct administration to continue to work on these areas, and then we come back and reassess if this is still feasible, looking at a number of these different aspects? But really saying, fall of 2021 would be the earliest time that we would, we would consider a change. So, so we sort of get that off of families who are concerned about what might be coming, and the fact that we are already in January, and there's a number of things we still feel like we can explore. Yeah, Tom?
Just want to comment on that. If, if people hear that, well, it's off for 2020, will it then go in the back of their mind, and they're not going to think about it until, you know, we bring it up again? Instead of thinking about, well, if it did come to pass, how would this affect me? And, you know, do I need to talk to my employer, start talking to my employer now? I guess, again, the concern is that if we, if we don't keep it as a conversation piece to constantly sort of remind the community, will they just forget? And then all of a sudden, we'll be back to where we were when we started this.
Rob?
That's why I think we need, you know, we've had this public education campaign on vaping, for example. And that wasn't really driven by an agenda to change anything in the schools except to get healthier habits. And I think we need to have a kind of public health education campaign on the benefits of good sleep habits and, and speak to people about, you know, get experts to talk about good sleep hygiene, things we can do now to keep that on people's minds, and to, to talk about the underlying issue of, of good sleep hygiene. And, but not specifically make it tied to an agenda to change things, because then people are going to just say, you're just trying to convince us of, to make this change. Whereas these are benefits. And these are things that, that, you know, all of us, I mean, I certainly could, could have better sleep hygiene. We need to know, you know, what we can do. And you often don't know what to do unless you end up getting an appointment with Dr. Huff or Heather Saylor, who was really great. So, so I think, you know, that kind of a campaign ongoing. And people will understand that, you know, as our piece of this, we're still talking about what schools can do to, to contribute to solving this problem. But I don't think we can solve it alone, and that we need to educate people about why it even is a problem, and think about it in others' terms.
So here's what I've heard people tell me. I've heard that, much like we did with the vaping issue, you know, a lot of people have really started paying attention to vaping in the last six months, right? We've had some very horrible examples of the dangers of vaping nationally, and then all of a sudden, a bunch of people woke up. You all know that we've been talking about this for well more than a year with you, right? If you remember when we had that first presentation. We have a strategic partnership that is going into effect with Northfield Hospital and Clinics, where they are also going to start helping us with the next layer of our public information campaign in that area. I'm hearing a public us, holding our role as convener, like we are doing on issues of race and equity, right? Using that power to bring people together, to learn that we should use our power of convening and our partnerships with places like Northfield Hospitals and Clinics, to do a broader education for the entire community, regardless of whether you come to school here or not, about the importance of good sleep and the health benefits of that. That's the first thing I'm hearing. I don't, I don't hear anybody having any kind of problem with that. I think that that's, people would say, that would be a good thing to do for everybody regardless. The second thing that I'm hearing is for us to really take the feedback that we heard from the community and attempt to mitigate those concerns through a variety of creative approaches. Whether that be thinking about the high school schedule, whether it be thinking about how we do transportation, whether it be focusing on, are we really being as efficient in scheduling our facilities for our activities? Regardless of whether we moved forward with a later start, we heard from everyone that they'd like their kids to be home earlier, right? We heard that ad nauseam from a lot of people. Are we really using what we have in that way? Are there other academic strategies that we could do in partnership with this that could have a positive reduction of stress on students? Thinking about are, are our homework strategies really the best for us? Thinking about helping students learn to make choices so that in our school of high, a high number of overachievers, and I mean that in a very good way, that they are looking, do I really have the time to do all three of these activities in the same season? Helping that decision-making process that we know is going to be really important for them when they leave us. And to continue to look at some of these kinds of things with an eye for the future, that as soon as 2020, 21, we potentially could have solved some of these issues to make sure that we'd be in a position where it would not be the same things coming back from the community, because we've really listened, we've really heard, we've really made sure we have done some updates. We have engaged in a broader discussion with things like the business community. I have talked with the Chamber of Commerce talked with the Chamber of Commerce Board about this, and gotten some feedback from the businesses on that board, but that is an area that that's as far as we had gone with that, so there are some other options. I'm hearing you saying that we should continue our work, but not necessarily be focused on, well, not, I'm hearing you say, don't focus on for the start of the 2020 year, but continue working to make sure that we can knock off the issues that we see ahead of us, to put us in a better position where we would potentially be able to do that in either 2021 or sometime soon after. Is that what I'm hearing from people? Because I serve at your pleasure, and I will do what you ask me to, so, I think one of the things that I need to do is provide people an update this week, in terms of just sharing, we've had this very robust discussion, that the board is still interested in making sure that we go down this road, but that we have heard a number of concerns that we want to make sure that we are able to dive more deeply into, and that they can expect to continue to hear about this discussion over time, and that we're going to invite them, and maybe some other people, to help us really do this full-court press on understanding the issues of sleep. And I think that for all of us, it is one of the single most things that we can do as adults, and if as adults, we can model that for kids, right, that's going to be a good thing? And then, as I think we become more educated, truly educated, not just hearing, oh, here's what the research says, and that's on me, that's how I have educated people, really trying to share with them the research and the benefits of it. I think there's another layer that we can go into, you know, that would convince people that this is the right thing to do for myself, right? Not just for the kids, but for everyone, because everyone's a little happier when you have the right amount of sleep, right? So, if the worst thing that we came out of this was using our convening power to help improve public health, I'll take it. It's a little bit outside our purview, I'll be straight with you on that, that, you know, this is a little bit outside what I think public schools should have to do, but I do think we think it's a really important thing for our students to learn, and we need to engage all of the adults in the community to help us with it. Does this make any sense?
Yes, excellent. Okay.
I have a question. You summarized everything so well, but what sort of timeline are you thinking for this process, and is it too early for me to ask that question?
You know, I need till about 8 o'clock tomorrow morning. No, I, we will devise a plan, you know, that we will share with you, and we'll work backwards from what I would think would be the next reasonable decision point. So I think you have to always work with the end in mind, right? And if you're saying that the next reasonable endpoint would be a decision for the 2021 school year, 21, 22, to me, that puts that decision probably in October or November, right? So, you know, thinking about, we've got an additional amount of time in bringing it to you, you know, for that kind of consideration in October or November, I think is probably pretty, that's what we tried to do this year, and then we had all those kinds of things come out, we had our public feedback in November, wanting to make a decision by, you know, late January. We know other districts have made decisions in February, early February, late February, but I think we've heard from a number of people that that is, that's too short of a timeframe for folks, and people have a different opinion, there are some folks who wonder why we haven't done this already, and others who wonder why we have some additional work to do on that. We will not give up on it, because that's what I'm hearing you say. This is something that's good for kids, but it's also shown us, there are some other practices that are good for kids that we could do along with this, that could make it the whole thing super excellent for kids, right?
Amy?
I just want to add to that, I strongly encourage you to try to get us to the end of the process before the end of this calendar year, because we have all been working on this, and we have all been going to the meetings, and, you know, going, going to the community sessions, and having these discussions, and once we get to January, we will have a new group of people on the board, and it may just end up delaying things that much longer, trying to get them caught up with where everybody else is.
Yes, well, I agree that it would have to be within this calendar year, because I think we have to have, I think any kind of decision for the next year would need to be made, I really think it has to be made in November, and I wish I would have, we would have had that accelerated just a little bit more. I've thought the process has been great, I've really appreciated it, I've learned a lot, I've got to meet a lot of new people who I hadn't met yet, and that only helps us set up the next decisions that we have to make, a broader group of stakeholders we have a relationship with, I'll always take that, right? That's a good thing, regardless of what the outcome is. But we'll continue to move forward with a sense of urgency to create a plan that is the best that we can consider, and really emphasizing our role in that public health component.
Excellent. All right, well, thank you. We have to thank, of course, our parents, our staff, our administrators, you know, the number of people who are willing to either show up at a meeting or fill out an online survey. Dr. Hillman and Mary Grace Hanson for your excellent work in laying out the process, and getting us to this point, and of course, Benjamin Bus, who is, who's doing an incredible amount of behind-the-scenes work trying to, trying to figure this out, and lastly, to the board, I just appreciate the discussion, the deliberation, and how, you know, everyone is really taking this topic and this issue very seriously, and trying to understand all the issues before us, and we realize this is a big decision, so we look forward to continuing the discussion, and I think this, we are moving forward, and I think it was 2014 when Dr. Hoff first came to the board with, with the presentation, so, so it's, it's, it's been on our radar, but we're now at a point where we can take this next step and try to make, try to continue to move this forward, so. So, thanks, everyone. All right, so let's move on now to renaming, this is our last item for discussion and report, which is renaming the existing Greenville Park Elementary, which we know will be an early childhood learning center in the fall of 2020. How exciting is that?
So, I just want to bring this to your attention, so that you're not surprised about it over the next couple of months. Director of Community Services, Erin Bailey, and I will be working on a process in the coming weeks to solicit stakeholder feedback from people who are at either preschool, they're in our Licensed Childhood Care Center, ECFE, community, people who participate in community education programs, adult basic education. We'll be using an online forum in which people can make suggestions about what the name of the current Greenville Park Elementary should be changed to. You may remember, we had an initial concept of a campus naming process, but it's been to become very clear, as we've gotten into things a little bit more deeply around, things like addresses and those kinds of things, that we really need to have an independent name for that building. So, if board members have suggestions, you can reach out and hand those directly to myself, and then we will be getting a variety of feedback over the next couple of weeks from Greenville Park, or from the stakeholders that I mentioned just a couple of moments ago. Erin and I will take a look at that, we will narrow that list to maybe 10 for your consideration, and then hopefully get us down to where you are, at a point where you can make that change in late February.
Okay, excellent. Questions or comments about the process, or the naming of the facility? Okay, that's exciting.
Yes, it is.
So, when do you anticipate, then, that, I know you're still gathering, or still collecting the timeline, or putting together a timeline for the decision? So, late February, that online, is that something we see?
So, I anticipate we'll get that out pretty quickly here, actually, and then my suggestion would be that we present that to you at the first meeting in February. The first meeting in February, I will be gone, completing my final course in the National Superintendent Certification. Director Bailey will be in this chair at that meeting, and she will share those finalists with you, then asking you at the second meeting in February to make a final determination.
Any questions, board members on that? Okay, so that takes care of our items for discussion and report, so we'll move on to approval of the consent grouping. As a reminder, there were some personnel items in the table file that were added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping for separate consideration? Okay, do we have a motion to approve? Motion by Jeff, is there a second? Second by Ellen. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to items for individual action, we have two this evening, the first one being approval of policy 510, 532, 534, 535, 603, and 611, which were presented for first reading at our December 9, 2019 board meeting. So, is there a motion to approve the changes to policies as presented? Moved by Noel. Is there a second? Second by Tom. Discussion questions on the policy changes? Yes, Amy?
I just had a question about the animal policy. I've seen lately anxiety dogs, is that considered, I was confused by the policy whether an anxiety dog would be allowed.
So, that would be, that, an anxiety dog would be under the concept of therapy animals, which are covered in the policy, and so while it's not a service animal, there's a similar approach, that, in fact, the one change in the policy from the last time we had it, now, is that, Julia had brought up a very good point about the liability, who covers the liability, whether it's a service animal, a documented service animal, or a therapy animal, and we've, MSBA thanked us for our suggestion, and they made that change not just here, but for everyone, so that was us influencing the whole state, so that's a good thing. So, no, I think that this is the kind of thing that is, would be addressed under this policy as well.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our second item for individual action is a resolution supporting Form B, which is an application to the Minnesota State High School League Foundation, that was submitted by Activities Director Joel Olson, and it gives some much-needed funds for programs like Rally, and some of the other efforts that Joel Olson does with our students. So, is there a motion to approve the resolution of school boards supporting Form B application to Minnesota State High School League Foundation? Moved by Amy, is there a second? Second by Ellen. Is there any questions or comments on this? Okay, this is a resolution, so it does require a roll call vote, so when you're ready. Hurwitz?
Aye.
Marty?
Aye.
Stratton?
Aye.
Quinell?
Aye.
Brania?
Aye.
Iverson?
Aye.
Fisher? Aye. Motion carries. Okay, that takes care of items for individual action, we'll move on now for items for information. Exciting construction update number 19.
Yes, and if we take a look at construction update number 19, it's a lot right now, we're at a moment where it's a lot of the same this month as last month. We continue to see construction progress at both Greenville Park and Sibley. The painting in the renovated special education suite at Bridgewater has begun, had a chance to tour that just last week, and it's, it's hard to remember what it looked like before, and so we're still on track for that being finished by the end of January. And then, we will be coming up very soon with the bidding process for the renovated Greenville Park to be named later, and Longfellow School. So we continue to work on moving forward. One thing since the last time that we met, we did hold our second community feedback session at Greenville Park about the new Greenville Park project on December 17. We had a half a dozen or so people who came and just wanted to ask questions, of course, that's the entire construction team that is there, the construction and leadership team, and a very good conversation. So we continue to move ahead and are pleased with the progress.
Any questions on construction? So, next item for information is the enrollment report, Dr. Hillman.
So you'll see the January enrollment report, you'll see that we are up three additional full-time students over January, we've made some progress so far this year in terms of compared to our September 3 number. You'll also be able to see that, I want to point out that at the elementary school, our class sizes, if you look at the second page, are, one of the, while the declining enrollment has its own issues, one of the benefits is the fact that you see, we have some of the more attractive class sizes that we've seen in some time.
Any questions or comments on the enrollment report? Okay, so last item for information, once again, we're thrilled to be honoring Noel Stratton at the Minnesota School Board Association Convention, they will be doing a lunch as part of the luncheon activities, it will be honoring Noel Stratton for his 40 years of service, which is just incredible, so we'll be doing that Thursday of this week.
Can we clap for him?
Yeah. We can't clap enough for you, Noel, I mean, that's just amazing, absolutely amazing. So, future meetings, all regular school board meetings coming up, Monday, January 27th, Monday, February 10th, and Monday, February 24th of 2020, 7:00 PM in the Northfield High School Media Center. So with that, I ask for a motion to adjourn, moved by Noel, is there a second?
I second that, so we can all go home and get some sleep.
Okay, excellent. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned.